Okay, I'd like to open up the special, um, special Board of Finance meeting for, um, March 21st. Please join me in the pledge. Pledge leaders into the floor.
To the United States of America.
Into the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everybody. Um, boy, the budget season's coming to a fast end. Uh, I appreciate everybody's time they put into it, so, um, we have Dr. Carver. We had a, a town, a public hearing last night, I thought it went pretty well. Dr. Carver did a good job answering questions and I think everybody had a good input. Um, first thing on our agenda is correspondence. Do we have any other correspondence? You brought one in.
Yes, they're attached in a packet.
Yeah, okay, so there was one letter, I think, uh, discussing the budget, so you guys will all have a copy of it for the record. All right, uh, second thing, we've been holding this over a little bit. This is a new policy about, um, cell phones, so I'm gonna have Cynthia read this into the record. Everybody has a copy of it? Cynthia, if you can read that.
Okay. To all elected and appointed boards and commissions, FOA, Freedom of Information Meeting Policy. While a meeting is in session, the following protocol should be followed. One, personal devices should not be used to communicate through any means including text message, email, instant message, social media post, or conversation. An exception will be made if the device is being used as part of the meeting session, i.e. a member is participating in the meeting by a phone conference. If there is a need to communicate regarding personal business during the meeting, the member should excuse himself/herself from the meeting and exit the meeting room or request the chair to move for a meeting recess. Two, any conversations by members or questions should be addressed to and through the chair. Talking, asking another member a question, or whispering any comments to another member should not take place. At public meetings, the public generally expects that the business being conducted is public business. Pursuing to the Freedom of Information Act, Connecticut General Statute, Section 1-200 at SEC as amended, FOI Act, the public has the right to know what public officials are saying at public meetings on topics related to the public's business unless such statements are made during a proper executive session or are otherwise exempt from disclosure under the FOI Act. Failure to adhere to the business of the meeting and/or the aforementioned protocols could subject public officials to a FOIA request requiring the disclosure of information that may be sensitive or inappropriate for public knowledge. In addition, a subsequent proceeding could be commenced with the FOIA commission, which may result in a significant expenditure of time and resources, a fine, board or commission actions being set aside, et cetera. Thank you, and please keep the above in mind at all times while you are participating in a board or commission meeting. Daniel D. Carter, First Selectman.
That was all on that page? Excellent. Um, Cynthia, again, I think everybody knows what this is about. Um, it's a policy, a policy was enacted and the First Selectman, uh, made that policy part of the town. So, you know, we run things pretty loose here, we joke around a little bit, so we just wanna be aware of this, uh, FOI problem. That's why I wanted to have it part of the record tonight and just read into the record, okay? Uh, moving along, uh, is any other, uh, comments about this policy, everybody else good about that? Uh, we're gonna run through these minutes, and some people weren't here, so I think most of us were here in most of these meetings, so. Uh, I'd accept a motion for the January 10th regular meeting.
Go ahead, um, was that, you made a motion, sorry?
I would accept a motion if you'd like to make a motion.
So, you're, okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the board meeting minutes from January 10th.
I'll second that motion.
Excellent, so we have a motion and seconded, and I'm sorry, Dee, uh, Dee's trying to get on, I believe. If, if you don't mind, uh, Dee Foster is just, uh, getting me up here, I just wanna make sure she's trying to get on.
Yeah, she's in the way. Oh, she's, it says she's joining, if she's, she's gonna be there in a minute.
Excellent. Uh, so we have a motion, any discussion about the January 10th minutes? Everybody's got a copy for their record? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Yep, and we have one abstention, you were not there for that one.
Cynthia, it says that you were absent.
I was? Never mind.
January 10th.
I have to abstain as well.
I think you need to take your motion back.
No, I, I really did, I'm, I would, I know I made the motion, I made the motion.
And John seconded it, and we have two abstentions.
I knew there was one, okay.
All right, thank you, Brad.
My bad.
Someone like to make a motion for February 9th?
Make a motion for February 9th?
I'll second it, 'cause I was here.
There you go.
Excellent. We have a copy here, D1, um, is any, any other discussion on that minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, consideration for the 14th, Valentine's Day, Brad didn't bring me flowers, but we'll let that go.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting, minutes from February 4th.
Any other discussion about the minutes?
I'll second that motion.
Will second it, then you can try next time, John, a little quicker. We definitely ended up seconded, excellent. February 21st? Was another special meeting, I believe.
Did we just vote, we didn't vote on the 14th?
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor on the 14th?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Dee.
Hi, guys.
How are you doing there?
Good, thank you.
Pop right in, you're right in front of us, popped right in there. All right, 21st?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of the February 21st meeting.
Excellent, do we have a second on 21st, second? Any other discussion on the 21st, it's a special meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
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 And we have one abstention, Bobby Joe's not there. All right, the 28th, we have a special meeting on the 28th, February 28th, someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes for February 28th.
We have a second on the 28th?
I'll second it.
Bobby Joe seconded it, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Joe? Okay, um, does someone like to make a motion, uh, on the CNR account for $11,500 for discussion?
I'll make a motion for a special purposes.
I'll second it.
Um, I did talk to the highway and, and we did have some conversation about this piece of equipment. Um, this is basically, you've seen different mechanics use it, it's a handheld piece, and this is specific for the John Deere equipment, and it's, um, when there's a code or an issue with anything, uh, yellow John Deere, there's a difference between yellow and green. But again, they can plug in, instead of calling up somebody and getting a $600 service charge, they come in and, and they can plug in and know there's a bad sensor, then the mechanic can do something in-house. It's $11,500, it's an investment, I think it's well worth it, I think every, every shop should have it, especially with all the John Deere equipment they have, so.
Also, a gas pump?
No, the 11,5 is just, uh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Says for software and a gas pump.
I apologize, you're right there, it's, it's, it was $9,000 and then $2,500 for the gas pump, I should've thanked you about that. I apologize. Um, the gas pump, I think we all know about that, that's just wore out from on and off, on and off, so. That, and no choice, but the, again, the hand scanner, uh, was, was a piece of equipment that the maintenance needed. Instead of putting in a regular annual operating budget, we thought this was a better call for it, so.
I think that over a period of time, it'll have to be a cost savings.
Yeah, it's, it's normally a $500 or $600 deal, if, uh, if the service guy needs to come down, you downtime, you plug in, um, and then they leave and you order a part, so they can do it more. So, we have a motion and a second, any discussion on that piece of equipment? Dee, you know what we're doing, right?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
I have a little bit, so, so I, I'm in favor of the motion and certainly are gonna vote for it, and I think it's a good thing to have, but I think it's important. We're, we're trying to talk about all capital improvement or capital purchases, and I didn't see this hand scanner anywhere on a list over the last year. And moving forward, we're telling all the department heads, we need to know what your wish list is. Thank God it's $9,000, but moving forward, we really need to know there's something on the list and, and not think we're, we're okaying something ahead of a list that is important for the last two years.
And also, even if they, you know, they have a quote or they even know how much it's gonna cost to all the components together, you know? Like, if they're gonna get one thing, you know, we gotta get the price, there may be accessory things like this that should be counted in.
And I, I would agree with that, and, you know, I know this is a smaller number, um, and it was in their annual budget, and the department had, did show a need for it, and I would agree, um, John, that, you know, it's, it's, there's a list of people waiting, and if it was a $100,000 piece, I would say, okay. Um, like the loader and stuff we bought a couple months ago, that's been on the list for a while, so, I would agree with you, and, and we'll keep an eye on that. Any other discussion on that? I'll try, everybody, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, with that record, it's unanimous. Um, boy, Brad, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this meeting's taking so long, but you have a report for us?
Uh, yeah, so, uh, collection rate's good, uh, we're at 79.19 versus 80.44. That's right where we wanna be for collection rate, revenue's looking good, um, some of we discussed previously, the miscellaneous state revenue is up because of the money we got from the state that we weren't banking on. Expenses are in line, is where we'd expect them to be. The only thing that jumps out, probate always jumps out because we allocate at the end of the year. Uh, registers of voters over budget. There's been a lot of extra referendum elections, right? Uh, that should go down a little bit because, uh, I believe once the registers gave me the list of how much it costs to do this special election for the, uh, water treatment plant, we're gonna charge that off to water and sewer.
Oh.
Or water, not water and sewer. Um, 'cause it's expensive, we fully had just because of water, so I think it belongs there, so.
I'm gonna break.
Other than that, I think we're in a good spot for that work.
Great. Um, I know we're gonna discuss about utilities, did, did you lock in the natural gas for next January, is that kind of, we're on, we're on a little bit.
Uh, we'll talk about it now, so, we had budgeted, uh, because we locked in at, like, $177 for natural gas through December, but we had budgeted $143 for the year because we were hoping that it'd come down a little bit, we were able to lock in the second half of the year and the first half of the next fiscal year, um, at a $1.23 a term. Um, so that's gonna result in, for this budget that we're gonna discuss in a minute, um, a $50,000 savings.
So that's until June 30th, until the end of the fiscal year?
Yes.
That price, okay.
Yeah, so actually, the price will run December through November.
Okay.
But it's gonna cover, the main thing we care about is covering the heating season for fiscal year 24. So, um, we were able to lock that in yesterday, um, the savings came to about $44,000. Um, I had estimated it to be about $50,000, Nick said, can we do 50, I said, we can do 50. So, uh, nice round numbers, uh, my recommendation will be to take $50,000 out of utilities. I think we'll have other savings as we lock in gas and diesel down the line. It's a little harder to lock in, nobody wants to lock in right now, so that $6,000 extra is from that.
Okay, great. And also, the audit, where are we at with the audit?
So the auditors will be in this room tomorrow, hopefully getting the last of the things that, um, we need. They haven't been out in person in five months or so. Um, we talked about it a little in the past, I know they've had a real struggle, like most places, with getting staffing. Um, so, and then once you kind of fall, we're a priority right now because he thinks we can get done before the end of the month. So, if you're close enough to be able to get done, usually you get that big push at the end. So we're hoping by March 31st, we're done, but he's, he pretty much has to finish up most of this stuff tomorrow. So, um, Sebby and I will be doing everything we can tomorrow to get the audit done, yeah. And I know they're working, they're trying to finish up with the board of ed tomorrow, too, so.
Seems like a lot, it gonna happen?
We've been working on it for months, we've been getting, they've had everything they've asked for for months. They ask for a couple more pieces as they get closer to it, so the holdup's been on their end. So hopefully we're in that final stretch, um, and that we get there. You know, the problem is, if something hangs it up now, they're gonna shift to somebody else that they can get done by March, and then somebody were in April. Um, so, it's not, I'm not happy about it because we've been ready to get this thing done first this month, so.
Right, anything else for Brad?
Make a motion that we approve, uh, the comptroller's report.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor on the report?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Dee's good, thank you. Okay, um, all right, so this got put on here and it's, it's a mistake, but we all, we, we added money to the registers. We, we said, uh, we added money to the town clerk, and we said we weren't gonna do the first selectment, but I don't know how it just got put on there, so we're just not gonna make any motion.
There's no action on that.
Exactly, no action, so. All right, again, consideration of the public hearing, um, so I know a couple of you guys missed it. I thought it went pretty well, I think Dr. Carver did a good job, you wanna un-mike, Doc?
Good evening, everybody.
I, I think, uh, the questions were answered, um, there were some statements, um, but for the most part, I thought it was good, good information last night. I know, um, Dr. Carver has something she'd like to announce to everybody in person, or I'm sorry, live.
Um, so I, I let both Nick and, um, Dan know at the end of last week, I think you know that we've been in the process of negotiations with insurance, uh, an insurance change and shift, given the rise in healthcare that we've seen over the last two years. And when we did the initial, um, when you guys deliberated initially, I was very comfortable, uh, with the $764,000 cut because I knew we would recoup that in the insurance and healthcare savings. Um, I let both Nick and Dan know at the end of last week that, um, and I've spoken to all the board of ed members, um, that I am very, very comfortable with another cut of $500,000. Um, you know, we really got a great bid, um, and it, not only did we get a great bid, but it, our employees, which is probably almost more important, are going to get the same level of healthcare that they got when we were in the Connecticut Partnership Plan. Um, so, um, I'm completely comfortable, uh, the board of ed is completely comfortable if you wanna make another reduction of $500,000. Um, and I guess that's it.
Okay, and again, um, Dr. Carver, I mean, it's apples for apples, I understand it's a high deductible, but at the end of the year, it's gonna be the same dollar amount, so the union should be okay with it all.
Yes, um, yes, and we've, 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 we've pretty much, uh, it's gotta be ratified, but we've come up with tentative agreements um, with all of the different bargaining units, and to Nick's point, the benefit coverage is exactly the same. So all the, the current, um, you know, medications and services they have, but it is a different format, it's a high deductible plan. Um, and we were on it when I first started in Bethel back in 2014, so we're shifting back to it, so some of the employees know it. Um, but yes, um, i- in the end, they'll actually save a little money, um, because their actual premium cost share is lower um, than it would be on the higher plan, um, so it really is kind of a win-win for everybody, the town, the taxpayers, the school district, 'cause we, that allows us, um, to maintain all the programs and the needs that we have, um, within the district, and then, um, and our employees get the same coverage.
And, you know, one of the board members had asked me, well, why, if this was such a great deal, why weren't we on it last year, or the year before, or the year before? Can you just explain that the other insurance was a good deal, and then?
It was, it was, so when we, when we switched to the Connecticut Partnership Plan initially, um, i- in that was, I, God, Brad probably knows the exact year, um, but it was at least five or six years ago, um, do you know, Brad?
Oh, probably about seven, eight years ago.
Yeah, um, we actually saved millions of dollars at the time, but what's happened is, the partnership plan, um, has exponentially risen in cost, so initially, it was still a good value, the, we were looking at, um, increases at like 4%, it was falling under the, the averages for the state, even with the Fairfield County cap of 2%, we were still seeing pretty good, um, um, or the increases were not as significant as we, as we could have probably seen in the private sector. Last year, um, the partnership plan went up 10% and I was concerned. And when we got the rates for this year, um, well, going for next fiscal year, but, um, in, I think it was December, November, December, Brad, right, where they were saying it couldn't be, the rate increase could be, they were between 9% and 12%? Just given every, what, I'm sorry?
Yeah, they initially came out with 9% to 12%.
Yes, um, and they were, and they were letting us know that it might be on the high end. Um, we just knew, given all the other needs that we had in the district, that we had to at least do our due diligence and go out to, and, and um, inquire whether or not we would have any savings, so initially what happened is, we just had our insurance consultant, who's the same insurance consultant for the town, um, and we asked them to get a quote to try to compare um, whether or not there would be any potential savings if we were actually to formally go out to bed. The quote came out very favorable, um, and, you know, I think, um, one of my union leaders said, you know, I think Bethel teachers, um, and, and our, uh, employees were actually subsidizing a lot of the state plan, uh, because our rates are, are, um, Brad, what's the term when you said, that you, uh, when you, with the employees, that we have very good rates, like, we have very good, um, what is it called, Brad?
I, I would call it usage, like.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, our usage is low compared to a lot of other people's. Yes, we do, we have a lot less claims, um, and so, when we actually went out to bed, we had five different, um, um, insurances, um, uh, you know, go up, uh, do the beds, and, uh, we're ending up, uh, with a switch to United Healthcare, which ironically is the plan that, um, the partnership plan was on when, um, we, um, first started the Connecticut Partnership Plan. So it's good, 'cause a lot of the doctors are in network, and, and there's been really, really little disruption to that. Um, so that's the history, um, when we started to see the rise in cost and the fall, is when we really started to take action, just knowing our increased enrollment, everything we talked about last night, right? And, um, and we also have contract, we had contract language in all of our bargaining unit, um, that we could go back to the health plan if the cost rose significantly, so we were able to act on that.
Okay.
And can I just give, just to something Dr. Carver talked about, just for the town side? So the town budget for 2024 is three point, just under $3.2 million for 2024. In 2016, we were $3.1 million, so when you look at 2016 to 2024, it's not, it's a very small change, it's a $50,000 change, really.
And all that.
Um, it's because when we initially switched to the partnership plan, we saved a ton of money.
Right.
I would just creep back up to the point where we were, at least on the town side spending, um, but it's, they had the ability to move, so they did.
Right.
It's a much harder push, 'cause some of our unions were never on the, uh, were never on the high deductible plan, so they don't have the language in their contracts to switch, so.
I just went, well, first of all, I'm not gonna go as far to say that Connecticut Partnership is a Ponzi scheme, but I was never a fan. And last year, I remember, it was, they were saying 10%, maybe could be 8, and that, to me, was the, you know, that was the warning signal.
Right, and it went up to 10, was it 10 and a half last year, Brad?
I think it was.
10 and a half.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was crazy.
So, um, I just wanna say thank you for doing that due diligence, because it's a lot of work, and I just wanna thank you in general for making this budget process very smooth, and I think that we all worked well together, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And again, Doc, I've said it and I'll say it again, you know, you and Jen were very proactive, you knew there was a house fire, and you called the fire department early, and, and we do appreciate it.
It's never mattered with the title.
That's a good analogy.
Just so everybody knows, the partnership plan is currently estimating 7.1.
Yeah, they did end up coming down, he, Brad's right, they did end up coming down, but it's still such a significant savings for us.
Not to come down.
That's terrific.
You're gonna get bounced.
All right, um, so I, I guess we'd, uh, I'd accept a motion, if someone like to make a motion for the 450 account?
I would, I'd like to make a motion that we reduce account number 45, uh, 70-450 in the amount of $500,000.
I'll second it.
And can you just make the new dollar amount, Tom, to that motion?
The, the, I'm sorry, so the new total would be $53,159,164.
So we have a, a, a motion, we have a second, any other discussion on the, the reduction of the healthcare for the board of ed?
Well, it's the bottom line.
The bottom line, I'm sorry, yes, the bottom line, you're right, exactly. All right, all in favor on the reduction?
Aye.
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 All right, with the record, it's unanimous, great. Again, Dr. Carver, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, good night, everybody.
Good night, now. All right, so we have one more adjustment on, uh, utilities, um, I think everybody knows, if someone like to make a motion to, for discussion on that?
I'd like to make a motion that we reduce account number 10-410 in the amount of $50,000 to make the new total, um.
You gotta do the line first, the 5321 line.
5321.
Yeah, just add it. Line number 5321, sorry, in the amount of $2,500, the new total will be $2,543,060.
I'll second it.
We have a, a motion and a second, I think everybody knows it as well, we talked about it, then, uh, comptroller, so.
So before, before we vote on it, you know, last night I sat there and I was astounded by how it was a town meeting and it seemed like it was taking over by a few people that all they wanted to talk about is the education. And what was so offensive is, in everyone that wanted to talk about the education, they made reference to the community and how the community had to take care of the school. But I didn't hear one public comment about the community and about Bethel as a whole, and, and I just, I, I just feel like I had to say that, and, and I just found that it was offensive all the way around, that the tone was almost like we were anti-education, we weren't working for the better of our community, when I think all of us worked really hard for our community, so I, I, I just, I feel better saying that.
I appreciate what you just said, and in fact, I sort of blocked it out of my mind, but maybe we could, if the chair would permit, we could dissect a little bit of that, of last night.
Sure.
Um, a couple of things, so, what John said, it, it did feel like that, it felt kind of lectury. And, you know, I've been saying for many, many years that the people outside of the school community don't feel part of the school community, and that's always been an issue, because, and, and, you know, as, well, someone put it that they're in a cocoon, I don't know if I'd say that, but I would say that they are somewhat insulated from, you know, the, the town as a whole. And not everybody is gonna go to a softball game or go watch a school play, because if you don't have kids or grandchildren that are doing the school plays, you're probably not gonna do that, so I think that there has to be an effort made, um, on both sides. Uh, the other thing that came to mind was, this is the first year that I ever saw someone go up to the microphone and wave papers around saying, I don't know what you guys are doing, you know, they, that they don't understand the process, and I think that maybe, with Brad's help, that we could make some kind of distillation, like, I don't wanna say budgets for dummies, but some kind of, like, very simple thing that would actually be easy to follow.
Yeah, it's a discussion Dan and I've had with, uh, some of the social media stuff and communication stuff he's doing, that it might make sense next budget season before it starts, to explain the process to people. I wish, we had talked about with Emma, who's now doing the social media stuff, um, of posting either weekly or whatever, what upcoming meetings are going. And just going, to let the public know, here's the meetings, you can come in person, you can Zoom, you can view them on YouTube if you're not available at that time, um, and just made everybody, at least let everybody know what's going on. If they choose to participate, great, if they choose not to, that's, but at least, they, it's hard for them to say they don't know without us spending thousands and thousands of dollars and doing mailers every two weeks or News Times articles to try to let everybody know, but it, it's hard balancing out.
Right.
Trying to engage people that wanna be engaged versus getting over the head of information.
But, but if you limit it, I mean, I think that if you posted, like, maybe after each meeting, just a distillation of what occurred and what was done.
Well, we sort of do by, by minutes being posted.
We do, but that, that's another issue, is the, is the.
There's people that are, don't wanna be engaged, but then wanna be engaged, and, and we work on this all year long.
That is true. That is true, but what I will say in the defense of people who are trying to navigate the website, which is another issue that Dan is considering, it's, it's so, I find it very difficult to plow through the, the layers.
To get to where you wanna get.
Right, so, just, I mean, it's like a bulletin on the town Facebook page, it seems to make sense to me, I don't think it's coddling the people who don't wanna be involved, they can unfriend them, or unfriend the town.
What I think, what I think happened, what I think happened last night was one gentleman picked up a piece of paper that was at the front door because that was a legal part of the meeting, there's no document that somebody's gonna be able to pick up the night of a public hearing and feel like he understands what's going on.
It was two people, though, I've never seen that before.
But, you know, there's a process that happens here, and nobody sits in those chairs, and if they really wanna be involved, they can't, they can't know what's happening in one night.
I'll agree.
I, I agree with that, but I think that they should, I mean, it's, it's up to us to be the bigger person and just put it out there, that's all.
That's fair.
Which is depriving.
You know, I wasn't there last night, um, is it, is it any different than the last 30 years?
Yes, it was very different.
Well, I, I think, I think our process, it wasn't water and vinegar, it went really well.
It went really well.
And last night should've went really well, it felt like from the very first speaker. And last night should've went really well. It felt like from the very first speaker that they were attacking me, like last year. Last year was my first year, and they attacked me personally. And I almost felt like, what did I do in this whole process? I think the Board of Ed put a good budget together because they knew there was a fire, okay? So they they had the best budget they could, because they knew when they put the last ingredient in that fire, the health insurance, it was gonna be, they were gonna be in trouble. So they did all the heavy lifting this year, and it it seemed like the the teachers or whoever was in that public hearing thought we did all the, all the dirty work, and I just didn't know.
Well, Dr. Carver did did kind of clarify that, but.
Yeah, but she said it more than once, but they still, their opinion of what was sitting on them.
But see, there's, I think that people are used to doing that, to loading up for the public hearing, and there wasn't really anything to shoot at, except for you. But I mean, did they do that personally to you? Because that's what, because I think they were just doing it to the whole.
Oh, no, 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 that's not, was not personal.
Oh, okay.
Not not like last year.
Yeah, but I really think there was not a lot to complain about, so that's why we got lectured. That's the way I saw it.
Oh, again, I thought it was good. I thought everybody did a great job, and, um, we'll just keep moving forward. I mean, that's all we can do, so.
We have a motion and we have a second on these reductions.
Is there any more discussion?
Is there any other discussion on that? I'm sorry, did I, did I shut it down?
So we're voting on the utilities, reduction of fifty thousand right now, right?
Yes, if no one else has any other discussion. All in favor on reducing line? Again, uh, ten, four ten?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Um, is there any other discussion about the town meeting?
You'll need a motion on the utilities total. You voted on the line, but now you have to vote on the new total for that department.
Yes. Uh, I I thought I added that, of two million.
Now you need to do the utilities because it was fifty-three.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's redundant, but you have to do the department total to.
As a new motion, correct?
Right.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the new utilities total to be two million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Do we have a second?
Second motion.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion on that, new final number, or anything else you'd like to talk about?
I'm good, thanks.
Alright, all in favor on the new total on the whole line? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so we're done with the adjustments. Now we need to motion for the whole new.
Yeah, so.
The town and the.
Just to list it out, so the new town operating total would be twenty-nine million, six eighty, sorry, let me start again. Twenty-nine million, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. That service would still be five million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, forty-four dollars. Board of Ed maintenance is still forty, four hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars for a total town size of thirty-five million, five hundred and seventy-two thousand, eighty-nine dollars.
Someone like to?
Yeah.
So moved.
So moved, excellent. Do we have a second on that for the town?
I'll second it.
Probably just second it. Any other discussion on that motion for the new totals? All in favor? Saying, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So now, you are voted on the Board of Education piece. Um, the total budget, town and Board of Education together is eighty-eight million, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars.
So moved.
I'll second your motion.
Okay. So any other discussion on the total number for eighty-eight million, seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars?
We moved the big digit.
Yeah, we came off the eighty-nine, went to eighty-eight, Brad. Appreciate it.
It's my fifty. It was.
Well.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
And again, I'm just gonna give back.
I just hope your fifty really wasn't a hundred.
Right, right, right.
Maybe you're home.
I told you it was really forty-four, but they can't just give you fifty.
He's a horse trader.
Alright, so again, we have a motion and a second. All in favor on the total budget amount?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, again, I am so happy this went as well as it did, and, uh, thank you, everybody, for the budget work. Um, so this is going to an annual town meeting now, is that correct? This gets down to the Board of Selectmen and they set up the annual town meetings, is that correct?
So the annual town meeting date has been set, it was set in January at Board of Selectmen meeting, um, I believe in January, but it's been set for April third at seven P M. in the Bethel High School auditorium.
And I'll personally call you guys the morning of.
What time is it here?
Seven P M.
Seven o'clock. Where?
Uh, the high school auditorium.
The high school. I remember where it was last night. It wasn't there.
Where is it? The place you didn't go last night.
Alright.
So that, so that town meeting is is the, is the opportunity for the public to try to make, get a motion passed to pull money out.
Yes, only to pull money out.
Only to pull money out.
Not to add.
And the Board of Selectmen put that meeting on, and that's the the last opportunity before we go to referend.
Right, and the town meeting votes it off.
Exactly.
It's actually, I think, adjourned to a referendum.
Adjourned to it, you're right. Well, for that, sends it off.
Okay, um, there's nothing else on our agenda. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to add? No, I I accept the motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. I'll take it or whatever.
You'll make it, I'll second your motion. Alright, all in favor?
Yeah.
Dee, thank you for getting on, okay? We'll see you later. Alright, everyone. Brad again, thank you. I don't wanna say it.
You, I, you know what?
There's only three people.
You did it before she stopped.